Okay, we are live streaming and just give me a few more moments to get this on Facebook for the public. Okay, we are now on Facebook. You can start the meeting.
Okay, in compliance with chapter 231 of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey, adequate notice has been given to all members of the governing body, the local source and the Westfield leader. The news to the two newspapers designated to receive such notice. This notice is also posted on the Borough Hall Bulletin Board. This is the work session for October 5th of 2021. Let the record reflect that all members of council are here. Kim Moria, our senior citizen coordinator is here. Matt DeM, the superintendent of public works. Glenn Mortimer, our borough administrator. John Post, our attorney. Welcome, John. Sue DeFrancesco, our deputy clerk. And Jill Good, our CFO. Chief Gianuzzi of the Mountain Side Police Department. And Frank Mocella, the head of recreation. Did I miss anybody? Okay, so let's do a salute to the flag. I. Okay, before we start the meeting, I have a statement that I'm going to be reading with respect to the fact that this meeting is coming via Zoom. On October 4th, 2021, it was discovered that a council member had tested positive for COVID-19 and other council members had been in close contact. As a result of a council member's positive COVID result and in an effort to ensure continued safety of the other council members and the public, the governing body of the Borough of Mountain Side unanimously consented for this regular scheduled work session meeting to be held as a remote meeting on today, October 5th, 2021. As the discovery which prompted the necessity to hold this matter as a remote meeting did not occur until October 4th, 2021, there was not time to publish the change in the meeting format in the local newspapers. However, notice of the change to the format of this meeting has been posted on the Borough's website and Facebook page along with details for logging in, viewing and participating in the meeting via YouTube or by dial-in number. The community bulletin board was updated to reflect the meeting change and the Westfield and the local source have been notified of the meeting change and provided instructions for attendance. The agenda for the meeting was posted to the website. Discussions of topics shall be limited to matters of urgency and importance in accordance with NJ 10:4-9B2. As this work session, no vote shall be taken on matters impacting the public. Members of the public can submit questions and comments on the Mountain Side Facebook page and during the appropriate public comment periods or by telephone dial-in during the public comment portion. Okay, so we are first business is a proclamation in light of the fact that the school crossing guard appreciation day is October 6th, 2021. I am going to be asking for a motion for this proclamation so we can pass it prior to October 6th. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas October 6th, 2021 has been designated school crossing guard appreciation day. And whereas our school crossing guard guards provide an invaluable service in helping to ensure the safe passage of our youngest, most vulnerable pedestrians, children walking between home and school. And where school crossing guards typically serve with a dedication that discounts the rigors of harsh weather, split shift and heavy traffic. Whereas school crossing guards have served our community and helped to strive down the rates of young pedestrian death and injuries in Mountain Side while traffic volume has increased. Whereas school crossing guards help reinforce in the minds of young people, they assist the importance of traffic hazard recognition and safe street crossing behavior. In honor of school crossing appreciation day, it is appropriate to recognize the following Mountain Side crossing guards for the services they provide to our community. Mario Maglia Cana, Patricia Salvato, Janice Cilio and Robert C. Vargo. Therefore, I Paul and Mirabelli, Mayor of the Borough of Mountain Side, do hereby declare, proclaim October 6th, 2021 as school crossing appreciation day. We need a motion for this proclamation.
Still moved.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
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 So proclaimed. Okay, so next we have first topic for discussion is the authorization to apply to the Community Development Block Grant 48. Who's going to tell us about that one? Glenn, is that you?
That would actually be Kim. And this is for permission to apply for the grant.
Okay.
So we are going to get our opportunity to apply and the application is due December 3rd. And this is the same block grant that we have had for many years and the money is the same in the same amount of $10,750.
What's the programs, Kim?
So it's a senior, it supports my salary and also the salary of the van drivers.
Okay. Right, so does anybody have any questions about the application to apply for the Community Development Block Grant 48?
No.
Okay, so next one is a bunch of department refunds. It looks like Frank, they all have to do with either pool overpayments, senior gym, lifeguard certification soccer, softball. So you've reviewed all of those Frank and you recommend these refunds?
Yes.
And the appropriate administrative fees have been deducted?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So anybody have any questions about any of these refunds?
No.
Okay, next is the shared service agreement with the Union County for EMS dispatch services. I understand this is basically a renewal of this agreement. Joe, that's correct?
That is correct. It's a long existing contract we have with them to handle the medical dispatching for the Borough.
And how long have we had this job?
I think it dates back to when Chief Debbie was in office. It allows us to turn over the medical dispatching part to the county. That's some higher level of training that our dispatchers would have to have and recertify each year. And it will limit the amount of people that we could use as as desk officers. So it's a very useful service.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
No.
Okay, so the next one is the appointment of Christine Moran as part-time PD. Excuse me, administrative assistant. I guess that's you Glenn and Joe.
Yeah, we Nicole, who's currently in the position works basically at nights, which does not overlap with Joe's schedule. Plus, we had a retirement in the department opening up that we could take on a day person. Did interview several people and Joe and I were both in agreement that Ms. Moran was the best candidate. Joe, did you want to add anything to that?
Just that she's working already. She's taken very quickly to the job. Nikki is assisting us in training her and so far it looks like a good fit for everybody.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about that?
No.
Okay, so next we're going to move on to the Halloween. So I know that we've gotten a couple of emails from some residents on Old Tote who I don't think are supportive of it. For those of you, I'm sure everyone knows the tradition, except for last year, was to close Old Tote. So it's really up to council, whatever you guys' pleasure is, is fine with me. So let's hear from what council has to say.
I think if we kept it as we did last year, I think we would be responsible for the community and also for the residents that have requested it to be open to traditional trick-or-treating rather than close the Mountain Side tradition on Old Tote. Not closing the street and allowing all the children to go throughout the neighborhood to trick or treat.
I agree.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Okay, so I think we do have an agreement. The only thing I would ask Joe is that your officers play close attention to Old Tote regardless of the fact that whether or not we close it or not. If we start to get a lot of large volume, we're going to need some police presence there either to divert some of the traffic away from Old Tote if it gets too crowded or just to make sure that we control that. So Joe, put that as part of your plan for Halloween, okay?
Yeah, either way, we'll put extra people on. Whether or not it's closed or not, we'll put the same amount of extra people we have on hand anyway for everyone's safety.
Okay, so I think that since it's pretty unanimous, we're just going to not close Old Tote and leave everyone to do whatever they want to do, whatever their parents think they should be doing. So we'll leave it at that, okay? Next, we have an authorization for a donation for the PTO trunk and treat event. In the past, the PTO has done their fall festival and we've made a donation. I checked with Glenn, I think last year, the donation was $500.
Correct, 2019 actually, but yes.
2019, so I don't see any reason why we wouldn't continue to support the PTO and give them the same amount as last year. If anyone has any comments, now be the time. Hearing no comments, no. Sounds like we should just go ahead and do it again. Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
Now, next we have the authorization to purchase a police vehicle. I think this was something that was previously approved by the, recommended by the police committee. I think it just got lost in the shuffle. I think Joe, and I'm, Joe, if I'm speaking out of turn, let me know. He is having difficulty needing finding vehicles at this point. So he thinks that there's a need to get something ordered sooner than later. Is that correct, Joe?
That's correct. The supply chain issues affect everything, even in public safety. Currently, there were no vehicles available or on the ground at the dealers even for public safety. Ordering it, if we order it now, it's 20 weeks or more out to to get the vehicle. It would not be increasing the fleet, would be replacing the vehicle that currently has 90,000 miles on it. By the time we get the vehicle, that replacement vehicle will have well over in excess of 100,000 or more miles on it.
Okay, and it's recommended by the police committee and Joe, we have the funds for it?
Yeah, I did tell Joe though, we had budgeted for three cars this year and this is only the second car. So I mentioned to Joe and I can mention it perhaps, you know, we could consider ordering two now. You know, especially that they're 20 weeks out. I mean, that was, that was the original plan. Instead of addressing this again next month, but that's up to everybody there.
Well, 20 weeks puts us into to next year anyway, correct?
February, March.
Right, the problem is, okay, I was going to say the problem is that if we don't spend the money this year, we're going to lose that money for the second car. That's the problem.
Third car, you mean?
Third car, because it's in the budget.
Okay, so I think it makes sense and it's good practice since we do have the money in the budget and there was the supply chain issue that we authorized Joe to go ahead and see if we can find two of them. Anyone have any comments or questions about that?
No.
Okay, so the next thing is the police chief compensation. Bob, why don't you?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if we, being a personnel matter and the police chief has received the rights notice, if we could move this to the executive portion of the meeting?
Sure, okay, so we move this to exec. Okay, next is the traffic light of W. Tracy Drive. Not really sure why we should do another traffic light in town, but let's hear what the issues are here.
Okay, Councilwoman Peter was contacted or perhaps contacted a resident who brought attention to what he believed was a potentially dangerous situation at the intersection of Deer Path and W. R. Tracy Drive. Councilwoman Peter contacted me to do some research on this topic. I also spoke to the resident myself. Chief Gianuzzi helped me out by looking at any traffic problems in that area. Really didn't find a need, at least over the past three or four years from accident reports where the light would have made a difference. And then I'm going to turn it over to the chief. He has some opinions about that it actually might even be worse. Joe, if you could just chime in for a few minutes?
Sure, our research and going back some years, we didn't even find. Today we did another search going back as far as 2016. We found no accidents at that intersection in 17. We found no accidents in 18 and just the other ones that we had already previously turned over to you. I don't remember of any serious accidents in that intersection that would have prevented with a traffic light. I know in inclement weather, the county shuts Tracy Drive down so that that roadways are shut for the public use during ice and snow events. As the traffic comes down Deer Path, it's coming down a grade on icy and snowy days and to have to stop for a traffic light at that intersection would be difficult. It would also be difficult for the cars having to maintain the grade coming down. Still up on the upside of the hill, but heading down towards the highway, they would not be able to stop for that traffic light. So presently, I don't see a need for that right now or enough evidence to support it.
Okay, anyone else have any comments about another parking lot and another parking lot, another parking, traffic light in Mountain Side?
Yeah, I would just add that I go through that intersection multiple times every day. I agree with Joe's assessment about the difficulty of stopping a traffic signal coming down the hill around a turn. And that doesn't seem to be particularly dangerous, like any intersection. Exercise caution, maybe some of the shrubbery could be cut back a little bit. I don't know if that's county responsibility. But that's, that's my opinion on the matter.
I agree with the chief and Steve.
And if there is some brush that can be cut back, maybe Matt, you could take a look at that. And see.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take a look more at it.
And then contact the county or.
No problem.
Okay, if it's not too bad, maybe we can just do it quickly ourselves.
Yeah, I'll take a look.
All right, take a look at it. That sounds great.
Okay, I'll report back to the resident that expressed this concern as well.
Okay, good. Okay, so next we have the best practices inventory review. Joe, I'm going to turn it over to you to give us an overview. And then there's a couple of specifics that I think we need to discuss.
So the best practice was issued on Thursday afternoon, pretty late considering it's usually out no later than the middle of September. So it, it needs to be discussed tonight because it's due before the next work session. So, you know, it's, it's pretty much the same questions that, a lot of them are the same that were there in the past. There's a lot of, and what do they call it?
Unscored.
Unscored surveys. A lot of it had to do with the American Recovery Act, shared services. Last year we had four no's. This year we have five, but there may be one or two that we might be able to take action on to change that answer. So we have to look into the, you know, maybe, maybe one may be able to get changed. But we've been looking at one of the issues for a while now and I'm not sure if we're going to be able to get that accomplished or not.
So Joe, with the five no's, it's not going to affect our state aid, correct?
No, no, we will get 100% of our state aid. It has, it's, 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 it's no problem at all.
Okay, so the ones that I think Jill is referring to is on page 207 is the official social media policy. I think we have it in our revised Personnel Manual. And I think John, it's, the question is, are we in a position that we can adopt that so that we can change that from a no to a yes?
I think so, Paul. Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, so can you take a look at it and make a recommendation between now and the next meeting? And if it's appropriate and we need a resolution to adopt that, then let's, let's put that on the agenda for the, the public meeting. The other one that I know that Glenn has been working on, I discussed it with him this afternoon, is on page three, number 12, the training for cybersecurity in malware detection, password construction, identifying security incidents and social engineering attacks. Glenn, why don't you chime in on that?
Certainly. Matt and I have been meeting with vendors. The chief has gotten out of the training business regarding cybersecurity. I'm not exactly sure why. So we will have to contract with a vendor. We've been working with our risk manager. We spoke to one last week and we will have another meeting this coming Tuesday. Hopefully, this company will be the one that will have some training. That will be a reasonable price and also good value. Once we engage that, we can have our employees and of course, mayor and council would be invited to take that training as well to not only check this box, but more importantly, reduce our potential liability in case of a cyber attack. Also, one nice thing about this program of meeting with these cyber vendors is we are quite a bit ahead of other towns. They were impressed and Matt and I were both very relieved and happy. That does not mean we should let our guard down in any way, shape or form. But I think that the kudos that they gave us were a nice surprise to me. I know we've been working hard, but to be one of the better towns around is nice to hear.
All right, anyone have any questions on that one? The other third one that I don't think we can address this year is under number, page four, number 16. That's, I believe we already have in our Personnel Manual, an anti-nepotism policy. The, the best practices is looking for us to put that into some type of ordinance. So John, maybe you can put together an ordinance so that we can get that passed. I know we can't do it before the November deadline, but at least we'll be on track to take care of it for, for next year. Other than that, you know, like Jill says, we have five no's that affect the score and it's not going to affect our state aid. So I think overall, we're pretty good as far as the, the best practices are. Does anyone have any questions about any of the items in the, in the best, best practice survey? Okay, so at this point, we're, we're moving on to bills and claims. Renee, that would be you.
Okay, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Mountain Side that the following bills are the person's name and for the amounts stated below have been duly audited and found to be correct this fifth day of October, 2021. The same be paid after council review if and when funds are available and that the mayor, council president, administrator and treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to deliver, to sign and deliver warrants for same. That's an amount of $199,959 and one penny.
Okay, we have a motion to pay the bills. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so let's, Sue, please poll the council.
For Councilman Andre.
Yes.
Councilman Deercus.
Yes.
Councilman Matt Jack.
Yes.
Councilman Messler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pacifico.
Yes.
Councilwoman Peter.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a few reminders. Our next meeting is October 19th, 2021. Bob, you have the invocation. We have my favorite proclamation all year, Red Ribbon Week. Practicing the next two weeks, so I don't stumble on it. And then we also have a proclamation for the U-12 baseball team that won the state championship this past year. Frank, you'll make sure that the coaches are aware that we're going to do that at that meeting and make sure that they don't have some conflict because you know, these kids got so much to do these days. Especially make sure Andrew Adnado is. Okay. All right, so at this point, we have, I don't see council comments, but if anybody has any comments, I think that would be, you know, it is the work session, so it's.
I do, and I know Councilwoman Peter will as well. But I just want to remind everybody that we have, the rescue squad is hosting the spooky trail again, October 23rd at 6:00 PM. It is going to be a spooktacular event. And constantly, please check our Borough website for any updates. We hope to see you there.
I'll just remind everyone that the fire department open house is this Friday, October 8th, starting at 7:00 PM. Refreshments will be served, so please do come by if you'd like to meet some of our fire department team, see the trucks and some training exercises. Thank you.
And the head field house is open this weekend, Rachel, or the Levi Corry House?
I believe so.
Yes. They changed some dates, so I did not announce that, but I do know next weekend, the 16th and 17th is forced entries in a weekend. That is, that is back this year. So do come by and visit that. For Levi Corry, I had those dates, but again, they did make some changes, but I believe so that it is.
I saw it on the bulletin board, the 16th for sure.
Yeah, but you know what? You can always check our Borough website. We're constantly, our Facebook page, we're constantly updating that.
Okay.
Mayor, one more thing. Just on the 23rd, also, we have Clean Communities Day and Electronic Recycling at, at the Borough Hall. So nine to one. So if you're into cleaning up the town, there's bags and gloves. Come sign up and bring your trash back you collect and also any electronics you can recycle, just pull up and the gentleman will help you get the stuff out of your car. You don't have to get out of your car.
Thank you.
All right, fantastic. Okay, now I don't see any audience logged in. Matt, is there any one in the waiting room or?
Mr. Mayor, no, there is not. But we are also currently on a 30-second delay.
All right, so we'll wait 30 seconds to see if there's any audience participation. We are going to have an executive session tonight. We are going to have an executive session tonight. And our crack staff sent me two announcements, so I wouldn't miss it. Okay, so whereas the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey permits the public to be excluded from certain matters to be discussed by the governing body, and whereas the mayor and council desire to discuss litigation, contracts, personnel, which are matters where the exclusion of the public is permitted, and whereas public disclosure of the results of this discussion will be made as soon as the matters discussed have been resolved by the governing body of the Borough of Mountainside. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Mountainside that the aforesaid matters shall be discussed in closed session upon adoption of the resolution. I think we hit all three tonight, litigation, contracts, and personnel. So we need a motion to go into exec. We have a second. All of us going into exec, say aye.
Aye.
So we're going to switch over to the exec Zoom, and we'll get started. Good night.